Good morning. We're going to get started with an invocation from Pastor Reverend Lavelle Crawford of Avery Chapel AME Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman James Greiner. Pastor Crawford?
Eternal God, our Father, we pray your blessings upon members of this council, particularly our mayor. We ask God that you bless their families and their homes. We pray for all who have been called to lead this community in which we live, work, and play. We pray, God, that you will help them as leaders to not ask first how do we fix this, but what do we need to learn, how we might need to change, and to whom do we need to listen. Remind each of them, oh God, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for a political debate, that they are not only leaders but also servants, and that it is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Remind them, oh God, no matter what the gender, race, creed, or color, that everyone is our neighbor. Throughout the ages, prophets have always called leaders of the people to respect and protect the least of those among us: our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, and those who are ill in body, mind, and spirit. We pray now, oh God, that you will bless these proceedings and all those who are here. Bless this community, and we must not forget the plight of those who have been stricken by tornadic activity, flooding, and other matters that are personal to them. We pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands: one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I call this meeting of the City Council to order, and we have no items today from the office of the mayor, which brings us to item four on the agenda, Journal of Council Proceedings. We have two items here that we can take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Request for uncontested continuances. We have items 901 and 2 that are already listed on the agenda to be stricken. Any further items, Mr. City Manager?
Yes. So on page 13 on the Consent Docket, item 7A0, and this is on the resolution requesting the certificate of appropriateness for the demolition of the jail building. That's been requested to be deferred until June the 18th. Under Items Requiring Separate Vote, page 19, item 9A6, S.P.U.D. 1107, request to defer this for two weeks. That'll be to June 18th also. Page 20, item 9D, P.U.D. 1710, request is to defer this until July the 2nd, so that's a four-week deferral. On page 21, item 9F1, and all the items here that I'm going to list will be stricken from the agenda. Item D is 825 Southeast 51st Street. The owner has removed. On page 21, under Unsecured Structures, item 9G1B, will strike this item also. The owner has secured. Item E 1103, Windmere Avenue, will strike this item to re-notify the owner. On page 22, item 9GK, it's 9G1K, 2220 Southwest 24th Street, to re-notify the owner. Item L is 711 Northwest 30th Street. The owner has secured. Item N 600 Southwest 33rd Street, the owner has secured. Item P 4006, Northwest 50th Street, the owner has removed. Item Q 11627 Northeast 54th Street, the owner has secured. On page 22, item 9H1B, 2415 North Highland Drive, the owner has secured. Item G 711 Northwest 30th Street, the owner has secured. Item H 600 Southwest 33rd Street, the owner has secured. And item J 11627 Northeast 54th Street, the owner has secured. And then under item 26, on page 26, item 901 and 2, will strike this item, and we'll bring it back at a later time. Actually, on that one, we're going to strike that. It's going to come back as recommended for approval.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. This brings us to item 6, Revocable Permits. Item 6A is a revocable permit with the Asian District Cultural Association for the Second Annual Asian Night Market on June 15th in Military Park. And I know I saw Toon was here. Step forward, say your name and address.
Toon Nguyen, President of the Asian District Cultural Association. Address is 2423 North Klassen Boulevard, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73106. First and foremost, I would like to thank you so much, Councilman James Cooper, for helping us, and all the councilmen and mayor for helping us mark the streets and the crosswalks. So it makes preparation for this festival much more safer and sound. Second of all, I'd like to also thank Councilman Mecatee and Councilman Stonecypher for the increase in the CDRP funding that we received in the last couple of months. It helped us a lot in our planning for this festival. The Asian Night Market Festival, this is our second year having this festival. Last year, in partnership with Parks and Recreation Department, we brought about 15,000 people to the area. This year, we're hoping to bring about 20,000 to 35,000 people to the area. Thank you so much. With this festival, we're hoping to bring a lot of cultural awareness, diversity. In this day and age, with a lot of, you know, crime, hate, and all this, what we want to promote is love and community and embracement. And so I feel that this festival is a way to achieve that. Not only that, it's because the Asian District is in the heart of Oklahoma City. So I believe that speaks volumes for our city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Toon. Councilman Cooper?
Thank you. You brought tears to my eyes. It's not, I'm not kidding. I have tears in my eyes. I was just thinking that the Asian District, you all are the heart of Ward Two. You really are. I mean, people drive through on Klassen all the time, and what you all have accomplished over there with your businesses and the parks and stuff, I mean, I think the best is yet to come. But just thank you for the passion for the area and for doing what you do. Thank you. So I'd like to move the item.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. Have a great day.
We'll see you there. 6B, Revocable Permit with the Gypsy Glam Roadshow for the Music and Wine Festival on Saturday, June 15th, Corks and Chords on Saturday, September 28th, and Beats and Barrels on Sunday, October 13th at Will Rogers Park. And we do have Melissa Smith, who has signed up to speak on this item. If you wouldn't mind coming forward, stating your name and address.
Melissa Smith, 6208 North Grove Avenue, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73122.
Yeah, please talk about your event.
This is our Third Annual Music and Wine Festival, June 15th. And for all of our events, they're all Oklahoma small businesses. We get, in the past, we get a little over 2,000 people who come for those periods from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. They shop. We have Oklahoma wineries who are doing tastings. And a portion of the ticket sales go back to the Parks and Recreation to revamp the Will Rogers Amphitheater.
Great. Councilman Cooper? Councilwoman Hammond?
Ma'am?
Yeah, well, I've never heard of this event, so it's nice to hear that it's happening. Do you want to say anything, James?
Welcome to Ward Two and stay there as much as you can.
Thank you.
With that, I'll move the item.
Second.
All right, we got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Have a great event.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6C, Revocable Permit with Perry Bubble Publishing and Broadcasting Company for the Juneteenth Festival on June 15th using Douglas Park, Douglas Park Recreation Center, Douglas Park Athletic Field. Anyone signed up to speak? Councilwoman Nice?
Well, I guess I can speak to this since that used to be my place of fun. The Juneteenth Festival, normally, I will say it has been at Washington Park, and there are some wonderful things happening with Washington Park right now with our geo-bonds. We're getting sidewalks and a lot of revamping happening there, so I'm assuming that's why it's now going to be at Douglas this year. So please come out. If you had not been a part of Juneteenth or heard what Juneteenth is about, I'll give you just, I'll be very brief. 1863 Emancipation Proclamation was signed. However, it wasn't until June 19th of 1865 that the word traveled down south to Galveston, Texas, for everyone to know that they were indeed free. So that is why it is a day that is celebrated and called Juneteenth. And so this will be something that's been held in the community, and we hope everyone will come on out and enjoy what this day will bring for this event on June 15th. With that, I ask that we move the item.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 6D, Revocable Right-of-Way Use Permit with Downtown Oklahoma City Partnership to Hold Brick Down Parklet, June 5th through September 2nd, at 2 South Mickey Mantle Drive. No one signed up to speak? Councilwoman Nice?
Well, this kicks off tomorrow, so I'm excited. I was reading about this, the parklet. So with that, you may see me at the parklet, and let's move that item.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 6E is Revocable Right-of-Way Use Permit with Red Earth Inc. to hold the Red Earth Parade on June 8th. No one signed up to speak? Councilwoman Hammond? Oh, Eric! If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
My name is Eric Aish. I live at 2300 Northwest 161st, Oklahoma City, 73013. I live in Mark Stonecypher's district. This weekend, we'll host the 33rd Annual Red Earth Festival at the Cox Convention Center. It's a celebration of Native American art and culture that celebrates what makes our state and Oklahoma City special, which is the native cultures in Oklahoma. Thirty-nine tribes are in our state. That's more than any other tribal headquarters in the state, in the country. We're going to celebrate it with a parade, which is Saturday morning at 10:00 a.m. We will travel down Walker Avenue from Northwest 6th to Reno Avenue. We expect to have 75 to 100 entries. We'll have tribal leaders. We'll have the mayor. We'll have tribal princesses, Clydesdales, all kinds of floats, and veterans groups. So we expect about several thousand people to attend the parade. The festival attracts thousands from throughout the world. The Red Earth Festival has been named one of the top 10 places to discover native culture by USA Today, and we've been named Oklahoma's Outstanding Event twice by the Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department.
Well, it sounds like it'll be a great event this Saturday, so I'll move the item.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you, guys.
Eric, we'll see you then. Okay, we're going to recess the council meeting now. We convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, a different body with the same membership. Here we have items A through G that we can take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have items A through D that we could take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OCPPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, where we have two items we can take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust and convene again as the council, where we find ourselves on page four of your printed agenda, item 7, the Consent Docket. And we have, let's see, what do we have? We already have a, well, we did have item AO was deferred. We have a presentation already for AT. I will say a few words about AN. Is there anything else anybody wants to discuss or pull out for separate vote?
Yes, I'd like to pull out AQ1.
For a separate vote?
Yes.
Okay. AQ1. Got it? Okay. We'll handle that at some point.
Mayor, could we discuss item AY? Not a separate vote, just...
Right, just discussion, sure. Okay. Anything else?
I have one, oh, actually a couple, Mayor. 7W, just wanted to discuss, and also 7X1 as well as 2.
Okay. Okay. Down here to my right.
Item 7AG, just not pool, but I'd like to discuss briefly.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Well, we will take them in order then, which means we will start with item 7W, Councilwoman Nice.
I was looking for our municipal counselor, but I know this in particular, I just wanted to make sure that we are good to go on this, because I know we had to defer, we deferred it a couple of times, but at the late hour, we were able to come to an agreement, and this agreement was met. So I just wanted to make sure we had that on record, that this agreement was fulfilled.
We need Kenny for that. Your side?
I just want to make sure. Okay. Or Chris Vargas is here. Yeah, just turn on back around here, please. I brought up the resolution that we had, so I just wanted to make sure that that requirement was fulfilled with LD Smith Properties.
Yes, we received a check from him yesterday in the amount of 30,000, the amount that was discussed, and we'll make arrangements for him to modify his loan agreement to take care of the rest of it and fold it in.
All right. That's what I needed. Thank you so much. So I just wanted to make sure we had that on record, that has been met and fulfilled on his end. So I don't know if we need to vote on that.
No, no, no. You just wanted to, we got that. Okay. X1 and 2, you can just keep it rolling, Councilwoman Nice.
Oh, here I go. And you can probably help me with this, Mayor, because this is allowing that authorization for those two landmarks. And I just wanted to make mention of those buildings. And I know we're all excited about the, at least a couple of structures being saved within the community, including the Trinity United Presbyterian Church. And if you have never seen this church, I would say just stop by, pass by, look at it, 2301 Northeast 23rd Street. And looking forward to hearing more and also commemorating the legacy of those landmarks.
Indeed. Thank you, Councilwoman.
That's all I have.
Okay. AG, Councilman Cooper?
Mr. Winger, would you mind giving us a little bit of an update on this particular project, please?
Absolutely. So item AG, that is in your agenda packet today, is the first of several Streetscape projects that are part of the Better Street, Safer City program. As we go through the process with the Streetscapes, we're actually going to be entering into design contracts with a design professional. So today, you're being asked to recommend approval of the contract for Johnson and Associates to take charge and lead that project. With your approval today, there's 60 days that are in the contract, allowing the engineer to work with community, have stakeholder meetings, to work with staff and others to prepare that report. That report will come back to this council for an approval, which then the final plans will be created. Entire process is going to take several months. It's not something that's going to be done in just a few short weeks. So that first report is about 60 days. The final plans would be another 60 to 90 days after that. So possibly within the next year, we could be in construction and starting the actual work on the Streetscape around Northwest 39.
That's all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay. That brings me to AN. I'll just say a few words about this. So this is a resolution to call for four special meetings, July 9th, July 11th, July 31st, and August 6th. The only reason for that gap in the middle is summer travels and trying to balance everyone's schedules. But there are four special meetings where we can hear about potential MAPS4 projects as we move towards potential consideration by the public of a MAPS4 initiative later this year. Felt it was time to, we kind of had enough, or we're getting to where we have enough meat on the bone for these proposals, that we can hear about them publicly and have something to intelligently discuss. And so we still have another month of preparation for this, but I think it'll be very interesting, very informative, and really kind of unique in the history of MAPS. In previous development processes, there's really never been this effort to have public meetings before an announcement of an initiative. And it gives everybody an opportunity in the community to hear what we're hearing and what we're considering. In the next two weeks, it would be my intention to finalize the actual agendas for these meetings. And Kenny, I'll work with you to potentially, well, I know there's any number of ways we can do this, but potentially amend this resolution at the next meeting before we adopt it with the agendas for those actual meetings. That's my personal goal, and I'm saying it out loud to make myself accountable, I guess. But that would, as of today, what you're considering are merely the four meetings and getting them on our calendars and everyone else's. Is there anything else anyone wants to say about that? Okay. If not, AO was deferred. I just wanted to point that out. We will handle AQ1 in a separate vote after we vote on everything else. And that brings us to AT, which is to receive the Oklahoma City Zoological Trust budget for fiscal year 2019-20. And I believe we have a presentation.
Yes, so Dwight Lawson's coming up here. Typically, with all of our public trusts, the city council has to receive their budgets. So it's not really taking formal action other than to receive that. And usually, we don't do presentations on those, because generally, those trust budgets are presented as part of other budgets that come before the council. With the zoo, Dwight hasn't had an opportunity to be in front of the council to be able to make the presentation. So we want to give him an opportunity to present his budget and just give us a little bit of an update on what's going on at the zoo.
All right. Well, thanks, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here to present that, which we'll do as soon as we get a password. City Council, 1, 2, 3. Now Bob knows, and we have to swear him to secrecy as well. All right, we'll just jump right into the next slide. Just a brief reminder of the zoo's mission. We want to be the state's premier destination for connecting people with the world's vanishing wildlife and wild places. And then jumping into fiscal year 2020, some of the things that we have ahead of us, both on the opportunity front as well as some challenges as it pertains to the budget. On the positive side, we have a full year of our new exhibit, Sanctuary Asia, which opened last fall. It's been very well-received. So we've got to run through that for the whole year. And we also have a still relatively new but growing rapidly elephant calf, which has been a big attraction as well. On the challenges side, from a budget perspective, weather is always a major variable for us. It's been particularly challenging over the last 12 months. We're seeing strong attendance when the weather's been good, but we've had a lot of rain. We've had a lot of poorly timed rain in the last year. A lot of key weekends rained out. And last fall, with Haunt the Zoo and all, we saw some weather as well that put us a little bit behind. We're also finishing up, back to the challenge section, a compensation and classification study. We haven't done one of these for our staff in about 10 years, and we know we're behind in some of those areas. So we've allocated some budget funds to compensate for that with salaries and merit increases in the coming year. On the capital front, we have a number of projects in the works. We've got several small exhibits that have wrapped up planning, and we're expecting to go to bid and have construction over the fall and winter. That would include new homes for our Galapagos Tortoise. That project is actually underway right now. New homes for Andean Condors, and a renovation of the area near the Reptile House to include several ponds and landscaping for native turtles and amphibians and things like that. Also, as you recall, we sublet about half the Zoo Lake Park to the Girl Scouts of Western Oklahoma. They're going to be starting construction on their summer camp here, late summer, into the fall. That's going to require us to do some renovations and updates to the rest of the park to accommodate circulation for folks, the public getting in and out in the non-Girl Scout area, as well as to enhance some access for the folks that still fish out there that want to use some of the lakes. So we'll be spending some money to get that done this summer and fall as well. On the major capital front, we have allocated some funding for design of our next major project, which is a renovation and reimagining of the very aged 11-plus acres just inside the front gate. That'll be a new Africa-themed exhibit. So we're in the planning stage of this project through 2019, and then probably bidding and initiating some construction in 2020. So diving into the guts of the budget a little bit, some specifics on the revenue side, we're projecting about a 1.6% increase in earned revenue. That's because of the budgeted attendance of 1 million guests this year. And we're also, we will be coming back to this fall with a proposed $1 admission increase for the back half of the year, but we'll bring that forward with a more specific proposal later on. Our other revenue remains relatively flat. That's lease agreements that we have. And the sales tax revenue, we expect to come up about 3%. It'd be about 1.5% actual, given the performance this year. But that's what we're projecting for the coming year. Looking specifically at the earned revenue projections, admissions makes up the bulk of that 9.2 million. Admissions is about 44% of that income. And then all of the other categories, or mostly other categories that you see up there, rides, merchandise, food and beverage, things like that, are all very much directly tied to that attendance volume. So as the number of guests rise and fall, so do all the revenue streams from those other events and things. On the output side, we're expecting some increases in operating expense, again, due to that compensation and classification study, as well as just ongoing merit increases. We have several new positions proposed in animal management and maintenance, guest experience and human resources. Debt service has increased a little bit, and that's given the borrowing that we did recently to prepare for Africa coming online. And then we have a decrease in our CIP and contingency funds. We budgeted more last year because we went through our every-five-year accreditation cycle then, and we had put some extra money... cycle then, and we had put some extra money in the budget to prepare for and then deal with any of the items that came up from that. And we, that's not a recurring expense. And then a decrease in some of the capital spending with the completion of a major project with Asia, and then moving on to the smaller projects and the planning for Africa. And then finally, on the details of the operating expenditures themselves, again, personnel makes up the biggest chunk of that 17.6 million, followed by utility costs, some supplies and other services at 10%. And that includes everything from trash pickup to advertising to printing tickets and everything like that. And I think that's all we have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dwight? All right. Well, the zoo's amazing. I think you know that, but you're doing a great job.
We've got a great team.
It's been another great year.
Yep. Thank you.
Councilman Greenwell, you wanted to talk about item 7A.Y.
Thank you, Your Honor. I was wondering if we could perhaps have David Todd talk in terms of a timeline now that we're approving, or possibly approving, the term sheet for the lease and management agreement. Ever since our April 9th meeting, David, I continue to get questions in terms of when can we expect things to begin in regards to MAPS.
Right. And the Y and I, this is the same process that we went with the other three, that we approved the binding term sheet. The Y staff and my staff are looking at various sites, and we'll be presenting those to the subcommittee and then to the advisory board, and then ultimately to council. Probably within the next 60 days, we'll have that site. We have an architect already selected.
Okay.
So we're ready to execute a contract with them. So probably nine to 10 months from now, we'll have the plans completed and we'll begin construction.
Okay. And the funds have been collected at this point?
Yes, sir. They're in the bank.
Once the approvals are made and final decisions are made, construction could probably begin fairly quickly after that.
Yeah, as quick as we can.
All right. Thank you, David.
Okay.
Okay. Well, that concludes all the things that people wanted to talk about. One approach may be to take a motion for all the items except for the one that Councilwoman Hammond asked to pull out, and then we'd address that separately.
I'd like to ask, with me bringing up 7W, because that obligation has been fulfilled, I would move to strike that from our consent docket as well.
Okay. All right. Well, why don't we, we'll take that as a motion. Is there a second?
Yes.
Got a motion and a second to strike item 7W. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 7W is stricken. Okay. Back to my suggestion that someone make a motion for all the items except for those that have been stricken and deferred, and then of course, except for item A.Q. 1. Got a motion and a second to move all the items except for those that have been stricken and deferred, and except for item A.Q. 1. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And now would someone want to take up item 7A.Q. 1?
Close the item.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'd like to discuss it. Yeah, so I wanted to pull this out for a separate vote because I want to talk about the way we think about economic development and economic impact and the kinds of companies that we offer these sorts of job incentives to. So I first want to thank Brent Bryant, our city staff, for speaking with me over the weekend and just getting me caught up on, I know that some of this is partially because I'm a little new, and so a lot of this has been in the works for a while. So I appreciate you taking time on Sunday to talk with me. But I do want to talk about particularly the nature of this company's business, you know, and just present some facts about the company. And then particularly, coming from a social services background, I think, when I think about economic impact, I tend to think a little bit beyond just like a basic spreadsheet. So first, I'd like to just point out that, so the company, Booz Allen Hamilton, is a military contractor and is one of five military intelligence contractors that holds 80% of our private military contract work with our federal government. In 2015, they made about 3/4 of their total revenue, which I'll just point out is in the billions of dollars from defense and intelligence business, and that their government contracting accounted for about 90% of their business that year, which typically, when we're privatizing these sorts of government services, we're likely undercutting those government jobs that typically are going to yield more stability and better long-term benefits. There's an argument to be made that, of course, that, you know, concentrating and privatizing can lead some, to good efficiency and cost savings, but again, I think if we think about the economic impact on a larger scale, I think we're actually losing in the long term. And particularly, when we're talking about military contracting and privatization, when a company doesn't have any financial incentive to cease military operations or provide intelligence information to government officials that sends people overseas, I don't think they're working in the best interest of our country as a whole. And, and you know, working particularly in homelessness services, a lot of our veterans experience homelessness and particularly have traumatic brain injury, experience PTSD or physical injuries that reverberate throughout our economy when they get home. You know, I'll point out that in his farewell address, that President White D. Eisenhower, who was a general, he was a military guy, but really did warn our country against what he termed the military-industrial complex, which he was describing as this rise of ongoing military industry, even in times of peace, that just propel this like need for armed conflict. So again, on the other end, I'd just like to point out the human costs of these sorts of privatized industries. So according to R, the city, and the Homeless Alliance, did a 2010 study on the cost of homelessness to our community. The cost alone to the fire department was $235,000 for responding to and transporting individuals who are homeless. Our total ambulance, EMTSA, costs were $635,000. And so according to that 2010 study, about 17% of our homeless population were veterans, and that equated to about 178 people at the time. And during our point-in-time count last year, that number was still about 10%, so it had gone down, but that still represented 121 people. So a reduction in only 50 veterans no longer experiencing homelessness after an eight-year period, and after an almost decade-long effort, both locally and nationally, to end veteran homelessness. And I have just actually heard today that we are releasing our 2019 point-in-time count, and that number has actually gone up by about 8 to 10 people. According to the National Coalition for Homeless Veterans, about 50% of homeless veterans have a serious mental illness and 70% have substance abuse problems. Our rate of veteran suicide in Oklahoma is the highest in the nation. And as someone who works in suicide prevention as well, I'm really well-versed in the need to support veterans when they get home, but I also have a vested interest in making sure we don't create a need for more of those services and sending more people into armed Again, like I mentioned, Booz Allen Hamilton is a billion-dollar international corporation, and the money that we've allocated to give them is a drop in the bucket to them, but to our city and to the veterans that are experiencing homelessness, this could be a huge boon to, to what we can offer them. So I just want us to think critically about the industries and the companies we're incentivizing to bring jobs here and the kind of larger economic impact that reverberates throughout the community because of the industry that we're supporting. So with that, I'll just urge, I'm, I'm gonna, oops, sorry, I'm gonna have to vote no, and I urge my fellow council members to vote no as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second on the, on the table. Okay. Those are, those are voting clicks, not microphone clicks, right? Any other discussion? No? Okay. Cast our votes. Passes, a lot of math. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. 6 to 3. All right. All right. That concludes the consent docket. We will now move on to page 19 on your printed agenda, items requiring separate votes. We have item, oops. Okay. Okay. My apologies. I completely skipped the concurrence docket. That is on page 16 of your printed agenda, item 8. We have items A through M, and I understand we have a presentation for L, so maybe we'll start there.
Yes, I've asked Brent Bryant. We had talked about this item previously. This is just another step in the process with our support for the First National Building. And I asked Brent just to talk about this. This is regarding the financing.
Yes. Back in 2016, the city council approved the TIF district to help support the redevelopment of the First National Center. In March, on March 26th of this year, the city council approved a resolution authorizing the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust to go, to issue debt up to $25.5 million, again, to support redevelopment of the First National Center. At that time, the council also approved the Economic Development Trust's request for proposals, and we went out for proposals after that date. And on May 1st, we received five proposals. A review committee consisting of myself, the interim finance director, and the city's debt manager reviewed all five proposals. And as a result, we recommended that the Economic Development Trust begin negotiations with J.P. Morgan Chase for the, for a $25 million TIF loan. This project, this, the terms that J.P. Morgan provided us were the best terms that, of all the proposals. In addition, it provides flexibility in the repayment of those funds in a, a rapid timeframe, so we can provide, again, essentially get out of debt pretty soon, you know, five to seven years after we do this. And what we're seeking here today is just for you to concur with the Economic Developments Trust's approval in negotiating. We anticipate that an agreement will come back to the Economic Development Trust in June, and we're hopeful that the private sector will do their closing by the end of June, and the project will begin redevelopment at the, at the maximum amount at that time. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Brent? Okay. Thank you. All right. Now I'd be willing to consider a motion for the entire concurrence docket, items A through M. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Councilwoman Hammond, it's okay if you were voting no, but do you mean to be voting no? All right. Passes unanimously. And there we go. All right. Now finally, page 19, items nine, items requiring separate votes. We have item 9A. These are all ordinances on final hearing that were recommended for approval at the Planning Commission. Item 9A. 1 is at 2515 Northwest 1st Street, going from R. 1 to I. 2. Councilwoman Hammond?
Yeah. Do we have anyone sign up to speak? Okay. Yeah, I believe this had no, this was unanimously supported by the Planning Commission, so I'd like to move for approval.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9A. 2, this is at 1120 Northwest 15th Street, going from O. 2 to R. 3. Also, Councilwoman Hammond?
Do we have anyone? Nope. Again, I believe this was, yep, recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, so I'll move the item.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9A. 3, this is at 3501 Northwest 50th Street, going from R. 4 to O. 1. Councilman Cooper?
Is anyone here to speak on this particular item?
Nope.
Planning, recommended approval, so I would recommend approval as well.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9A. 4, this is at 1015 South Morgan Road, going from C. 3 to P.U.D. 1716. Councilman McAtee, we do have someone who has signed up, but I don't think it is the applicant.
Okay. If you would, David, give the council a brief overview of what this particular zoning has to do.
Sure. David Box, 522 Call Cord Drive. This is a P.U.D. application that would take this site along Morgan Road from C. 3 to a P.U.D. that would allow a multifamily development. After we filed this, we did become aware of some protests and some concerns, so we did go have a neighborhood meeting to discuss it. The neighbors that arrived at the neighborhood meeting live both west of the site and south of the site. Once we explained what the site was currently zoned and what could happen there today, we, we were able to kind of get through some of the issues. And so what we were able to do through the P.U.D. is provide limitations on height, setbacks, and some other things that we believed eased the concerns that the neighbors had. It's worth noting that there are no technical evaluations in the staff report. Staff recommends approval. The Planning Commission was unanimous in their approval. So when we look at the site, we have, we had four-story buildings along the southern side. After the neighborhood meeting, we reduced those to three-story. What you'll see is a significant setback. This is an 80-foot setback from property line to building. Same thing over here. And then within that 80-foot setback, you have a 60-foot landscape buffer that will have trees, walking trail. Within the development, you see the proposed pool, dog park, playground. It's a large site, so we have the ability to have a lot of open space as it relates to a multifamily development. So if you think about what the site is zoned now, C. 3, and what would likely be developed up against those neighborhoods if it were to develop pursuant to its current zoning, what you're going to see is probably some sort of big box retail, restaurants. And so what you're going to see if your neighbors, if it's developed pursuant to its current zoning, is the back of house. You're going to see the back of that big box. You're going to see the dumpsters. You're going to see the loading areas. If it's a restaurant, you're going to see the grease traps and the dumpsters. It's going to be the bad portion of a commercial development. So most of the neighbors that we spoke to were supportive after they understood what was going to be here. There was a, a sense that you're going to have residential, and that's going to be a better fit than what could otherwise be built. The only concern that, that we left that meeting with was, there was one individual that just didn't want apartments because he believed apartments were just something that invited crime. We gave him multiple examples all throughout the city of where, in fact, a multifamily development has actually secured the area, made it more stabilized, and has not created the problems. We understand that that's the typical response when there's concern, is that apartments are just going to create problems. We see it the other way. We think that this will actually provide a stabilizing force for this area. Perhaps now you'll have some commercial development along Morgan Road. That won't be up against the neighborhood, and overall, that would be a positive thing. So again, we, we did increase setbacks. We, we did everything we believed we could do to make this a, a more manageable product for the neighbors. And again, staff did recommend, recommend approval with no technical evaluations, and Planning Commission was unanimous in their approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Does the council have any questions at this particular time? Seeing none, somebody has signed up to speak?
Yes. Ian Wagner. If you wouldn't mind, Ian stating your name and address.
Yes. Ian Wagner, address is 1312 Selborn Place, Yukon, still part of Ward 3. Councilman McAtee and Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. I am the president of the Homeowners Association for Kings Point at New Westbury, a subdivision, rather small subdivision, in the Westbury North Edition. They're located off of Southwest 15th and Morgan Road, Sarah Road approximately. My subdivision is rather small. It's only 60 homes, three cul-de-sacs that are just to the south of this addition. 12 of those residents that live, 12 of those homes, properties that are in those cul-de-sacs, their backyards face these buildings. Really, the purpose of me being here today was just to ensure that the communication from the developers is accurate and that they are going to restrict the height to three stories, not four stories. The setbacks proposed is what that they, that they honor and live up to, as well as an increase in height of the landscape barrier, or not landscape barrier, but the fencing of the property to an eight-foot fence versus a six-foot fence, just to provide some safety and security and privacy for those residents. You know, in a development of 60 homes, 12 homes is 20% of my neighborhood. And so concerns from those residents were addressed through me. I attended a neighborhood meeting with the developer, and I just wanted to express my concern with ensuring that those restrictions are in place and those amendments do actually happen moving forward with this development.
Thank you very much. May I, may I ask you a question?
Yes.
So what I hear you saying is that if those three specifications that you outlined there are in this particular P.U.D., you are then... there are in this particular PUD, you are then now in favor of it?
Yes.
Okay. David, would you speak to that, please, sir?
Yeah, so following that neighborhood meeting and prior to Planning Commission, we actually revised the PUD document. So the PUD document is revised, consistent with the obligations that we said we would do to the neighbors, has been submitted to Mr. Teener and his staff, and that was what was actually voted on, Planning Commission, and is what is before you here this morning.
Thank you, sir. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you very much for coming down and taking the time.
Definitely, I appreciate it. Thank you.
With that explanation and with the approval of the Planning Commission and the staff, I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, item 9A5, at 222 East Sheridan Avenue, from Bricktown Core District to SPUD 1086. This was deferred a couple times. Councilwoman Nice?
It has been deferred a couple times, and now I'm ready.
Okay.
So I know the applicant is here, and in the ninth hour last, yesterday, we were able to come to an agreement. And I'll say why I was torn with this is because the Bricktown Urban Design Committee has their own revisions and things that they look at when it comes to the aesthetics of their area. And the staff and the committee denied the application. However, when it went to Planning Commission, they approved the application. So this is where I am, in the middle of that. Now, when we look at the aesthetics of Bricktown, we know it is a warehouse district. A lot of people consider it an entertainment district, but aesthetically, it is still a warehouse district. So therefore, we were able to come to an agreement with the applicant before it was 360 feet, 360 feet?
Yes, ma'am.
360 feet. And yesterday, we were able to come down to an agreement of 300 square feet.
Yes, ma'am.
Although the Bricktown Design Review, their specifications are normally 250 feet. So we were able to get to that, and I believe there was another obligation we had in here as far as advertising Bricktown events only.
That's correct.
Okay. So with that, I will say thank you. And are there any questions? All right. And with that, I'll move for approval.
I think, um...
Oh, go ahead.
No, I apologize. I think we need to move the amendment first.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's why we had this conversation in the late hour, too.
I can consider...
So with that, I will ask that we amend this application with those amendments added to this bud 1086.
Right. So vote on the amendment first. So that's your motion, is the amendment. And a motion in a second. And any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously.
Now, I would like to move the item as amended, please.
Got a motion in a second for the item as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe item 6 was deferred at the beginning of the meeting, and so we'll move on to item 9A7, which is at 1400 Northwest 6th Street, going from R3 to SPUD 1114. Councilwoman Hammond?
Do we have anyone signed up to speak on this?
No.
So this was approved by Planning Commission, and I'll move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item 9A8, 6610 South Shields Boulevard, going from I2 and R1 to SPUD 1115. Councilman Stone?
Thank you, Mayor. Francis, has anyone signed up to speak? Unless council has any questions, I'll go ahead and move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. 9A9, 1537 Northeast 24th Street, going from R1 to SPUD 1116. Councilwoman Nice?
This is for a senior living facility. And with that, I don't believe we had any protesters. We did not. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Okay, let's move for approval.
We've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. 9B, these are ordinances on final hearing that were also recommended for approval. Item B1 is closing Northeast 22nd Street between I235 and West Capitol Square, and also closing North Walnut, North Central, and West Capitol Square between Northeast 21st and Northeast 23rd. And Councilwoman Nice, it looks like we do have the applicant here available for questions, not necessarily needing to speak.
Does the council have any questions? With that, I'll move for approval.
Okay, got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. 9B2, closing and vacating in easement located in the 5700 block of Northwest 130th Street. Councilman Stone cipher.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an ordinance on final hearing. It was approved by the Planning Commission. I'm not aware of any protest or anyone that's signed up to speak, so I'd move for its approval.
Okay. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item 9C1, this is also an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval. This is a special permit to operate a drinking establishment use in the C3 Community Commercial District at 5617 South Pennsylvania. Councilwoman Hammond?
Yeah, so this was an item we had at our last council meeting, and it sounds like from staff, Bob, do you want to speak to, you're able to work with the applicant, and it sounds like things are all straightened out?
Bob Teener, Development Services Director. We got a call this morning, and he's indicated that he wants to withdraw. We met with him and talked about the different code requirements for the use, but we don't have anything in writing, so it might be better to defer it two weeks and confirm that.
Okay.
So I didn't get that until just this morning, so...
Fair enough. Okay, so I will move for deferral?
Yeah.
Move for deferral?
For two weeks.
For two weeks, yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item is deferred. 9C2, special permit to operate a mining and processing minerals and raw materials use in the AA Agricultural District at 15201 South MacArthur. Councilman McAtee?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is the applicant present?
Okay.
If you would, give the council a brief overview of what you're wanting to do?
Blaine Nice, 100 North Broadway for the applicant. This is a sand and other materials mining permit. There's another facility out there that already mines sand and other things. It's met all the state requirements. The state's issued the appropriate permits and will comply with all the other technical requirements of the city. I believe that the lifespan of this, that question was asked at Planning Commission, is maybe 60 years. But like I say, we're certainly, will be in compliance with all city ordinances and have already obtained all state approvals that are required, so...
Thank you, sir. This was approved by the Planning Commission and by staff. Has anybody signed up? There are no objections. Seeing that, I move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item 9D was deferred at the beginning of the meeting, which brings us to item 9E. This is an ordinance on final hearing, adopting and ratifying the assessment role for a street assessment district in a portion of the Silverhawk Phase 1 addition, et cetera. We had a presentation on this at a previous meeting, so this is the second of two meetings where this is being considered, and I would entertain a motion.
Which one is this? I'm so sorry.
This is 9E, ordinance on final hearing for an assessment district in Silverhawk.
Yeah, the one thing I'd ask Eric to come up just briefly to speak on this. I think it's important that people understand what can be done through Title 11, especially our newer members on the council. And I get questions a lot at HOA meetings where people want to know is, is there a way we can get something done quicker, sooner, better? And this fits the bill, and it's helpful. And so I think it'd be helpful for Eric to explain it.
Thank you, Eric Wing, your Director of Public Works. So the item 9E, this is the final hearing for the Silverhawk Assessment District. And you may recall, one of the opportunities that we have through state statute is the use of assessment districts. In this case, where we're able to take private roads and get them converted to public roads, which means the city can take care of them. Up until this point, the portion of Hawktree Lane and some other streets that are in this particular development have been the responsibility of the private property owners to completely maintain. What the assessment district allows is that for a petition to be made, the council to consider and receive, then forwarding that to an engineering report and a cost analysis. If everybody is in agreement, meaning the city council and the neighborhood or the private property owners, we move the process forward into construction. At this point, the construction at Silverhawk has all been completed, and we're actually in the final stages on this one. So this is the final hearing for the assessment role. There's 30 owners. The cost was $132,254, and they will be assessed over a period of years $4,408 each for the improvements that were necessary to bring that road from a private status to a public status. And so with that, this is now going to become a public road that the city of Oklahoma City can maintain. With your approval today, this will allow the city clerk to take some final actions that are needed. And the last and final action that will come back to the council is the actual selling of the bonds, and the bonds are what will be paid as payment to the contractor that completed the work.
With that explanation, I'd move for approval of the ordinance.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. 9... Oh, we need an emergency on that. Councilman Stone cipher.
I'd move that it be an emergency.
Got a motion in a second on an emergency. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. 9F1, this is a public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures listed here, except for item D, which was stricken at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on any of the items here under this public hearing? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution found at item 9F2, declaring that the structures are dilapidated. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item 9G1 is a public hearing regarding the unsecured structures listed here, except for the ones that were stricken at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing portion regarding these unsecured structures? Yes. Wouldn't mind stating your name and address and which item you're here to speak on.
Stefan Doty. My address is 11-800 Ashford Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma. I'm here to address item 9G1A, 6324 South Douglas Avenue. I have been recently retained. They're simply asking for a little continuance. My client is Select Portfolio Servicing, Inc., who received notice of this on May the 22nd. And they are not actually, they're listed as record owner, but they are a servicer of the mortgage. And their understanding is the property is not occupied, but they found out late, they're trying to preserve that. They have indicated that they are soliciting bids to repair the fence. They are in the process of cutting the grass and trying to secure the open windows that have been found there. They want to preserve this so they can then, they haven't foreclosed on it yet. The argument's left. They would just like some time. They got kind of late notice, so they'd like a little time to try to address that if possible.
Chad Davidson, Code Enforcement. Typically with these, we go ahead and declare them, and then they'll have, I mean, we can give them a couple weeks to get it secured before we check them again.
Anything you want to add, Mr. City Man?
No, I think, I mean, just with what Chad was saying, we have the option that we could defer the item, or if we don't, we leave it on there. We can work with the property owners and give them the opportunity to get this addressed. And that way, if it doesn't get addressed and they don't act upon it, we can still carry forward our actions.
And I'm sensitive. I did call them and tried to talk to them. My contact's in Florida, and I indicated, I'm sure the council would like some kind of concrete, what are we doing? Not, we're not just keep pushing this off. She has very little information at this point in time, too. She did indicate they are soliciting bids, again, to fix the fence. They can review those, and they said they're in the process of mowing the grass and getting the windows closed up.
Yeah.
Councilman Greenwell, 45.
So we won't do anything as long as you stay in contact with our code enforcement people. So we'd like to keep it on the rolls at this point in time, move forward with it. But again, we won't pursue any action as long as you can demonstrate that you're making efforts to correct the matter.
Very good. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And just, I know it's going to be out of order. I noticed it's also there on 9H1A as well.
Yes, sir.
Same thing applied as well.
Yes, same thing, yes. So at any point, if you'll get his card, and you two just stay in connections, and everything will be fine.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wish to speak under this public hearing? Okay, well then, I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution found at item 9G2, declaring that the structures are unsecured. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item 9H1, this is a public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed, except for the ones that were stricken at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing portion of the meeting regarding these abandoned buildings? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution found at 9H2, declaring that the buildings are abandoned. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. 9I1 is a public hearing in relation to 9I2. We already had a presentation on this, so we're not going to get another one, but correct. 9I2 is a resolution adopting an amendment to the fiscal year 2019 budget for the Hotel Motel Tax Special Revenue Fund and the Special Purpose Fund. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under the public hearing portion in regards to item 9I2? Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion, which seems to have flown in already, for 9I2. And it sounds like I had a second as well. So that is the motion for the resolution at 9I2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Now we are at, small on the agenda, but big in our hearts, the fiscal year 2020 annual budget, item 9J1 and 2. First, we will have the latest in a series of opportunities that we've had for the public to weigh in on the budget. 9J1 is the public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak regarding the fiscal year 2020 annual budget? Seeing none, we are at 9J2, and I believe maybe we'll get a recap, right?
Yeah, so I asked Doug if he would come and just give us a quick recap on the budget, just from what we've had with the introduction that happened several weeks ago, and then several weeks, three weeks of the public hearings that we had with budget presentations. So if he'd just give us an overview.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Doug Dowler, Budget Director. I'm pleased to be here to provide a quick overview of the FY '20 budget. As we look at the overall proposed budget, it totals $1,554.2 million. You can see the general fund is up 4.4% to $481.9 million. This is compared to our FY '19 budget. We're expecting to finish a little over target for FY '19. So if you compare our FY '20 budget to what we expect to finish FY '19, we're looking at growth that's closer to 3% growth in FY '20. So not quite as high a growth as what would be presumed. We're looking at that percentage. Our other operating funds are up 3.1% at $249.7 million. Non-operating funds are down significantly with a net decrease of $50 million, and that's due to the decrease of $132 million in the MAPS III Sales Tax Fund, which we talked about. For this coming year, we're proposing an increase of 65 positions, or about 1.4%. And for this chart, I've included the amended FY '18 budget that included the positions added in police and fire funded by the Better Street Safer City initiatives. Those positions are continued in the FY '20 budget. So major departments, as Craig mentioned, have been presenting their budgets and have detailed the changes they're making. Today, I'd just like to highlight a few of those. We have some new positions in animal control, additional civilian investigators in police, new fire code inspectors. We're also enhancing fixed route bus service by adding holiday service and expanding streetcar service to include Sunday service throughout the year. Other changes include staffing in parks for the recently purchased softball complex off I240, a crew to maintain the Oklahoma City Boulevard, and enhancements to the staffing at community recreation centers. We're adding additional crews to improve pothole repairs, and utilities department is making a number of changes to enhance service and provide a better organizational structure. FY '20, we'll also see a couple of new position titles added, a diversity officer and a chief innovation officer. And as I mentioned before, the budget continues funding for the 186 police and fire positions that were added as part of Better Street Safer City 1/4 cent sales tax. We also have funded preopening costs of the new convention center and operating costs for Scissor Tail Park, as well as increased funding for the Homeless Alliance and for the city's continued participation in the Criminal Justice Advisory Council. So again, our total budget's $1.55 billion. Largest revenue source is taxes, and of course, sales tax, the largest... And of course, sales tax, the largest in that category, $468 million in total from sales tax. In the general fund budget, it's $482 million. It's more heavily weighted to taxes, which account for 70% of the total. Sales tax at 54%, at $262 million. Use tax making up the, most of the other use, other taxes category. When we look at the general fund by service area, you can see in broad terms, the majority, 64% is spent on public safety, that's $308 million. General government is in at 8%. Public services, the second largest category at 18%, includes public works, development services and planning. And finally, culture and recreation is 10% of the general fund budget. It's made up of parks and recreation department and operations of the Cox Convention Center and Chesapeake Energy Arena. And finally, using the kind of categories that are outlined in the Municipal Budget Act, personal services is the largest area of the city budget at 34%. Capital outlay is our third largest category at 25%. And because MAPS III is such a significant piece of the total, we've broken that out so you can see it's 20% of our total budget is the MAPS capital of the funding that's remaining there for the, to finish up the projects for MAPS III. So the resolution you're voting on today contains a summary of revenues and expenditures for each city fund. These summaries are contained in the budget book that you received in section D, the fund summary section. There are no changes in this document that you have there from the budget book or the resolution that was introduced on May 7th. Under state law, we'll file this budget with the state auditor and inspector after it's been approved, and the budget will take effect on July 1st. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on the budget.
Okay, any questions for Doug? I think it's worth pointing out, this was somewhat an awakening for me in this budget process after all these years of the fact that you authorized $1.5 billion, but your last actual budget was...
Just under a billion dollars, was the FY '18 budget.
So I have spent a lot of time going around just casually saying we have a $1.5 billion budget, but the reality is you expect to spend significantly less than that, you know, a third less than that.
Right. For example, with the MAPS III projects, we need budget authorization to encumber the full amount. We may not spend the full amount, say, on, on projects like the convention center. They'll be spending a lot of money, but we have those contracts encumbered that go across multiple years. So we need the budget authority that shows that we have the money in hand that we can authorize those contracts. But like you say, we won't spend all of those funds in the year.
Yeah. Any questions for Doug? All right. I'm, I love all the highlights. I was making notes here. I'm especially excited about the Action Center position, the holiday bus service, the innovation position, the diversity position, and the continuing, though it's not new, but the continuing addition to our police force. So, you know, congrats to everybody. I know this is a big part of your year and a lot of work goes into it, so my...
Thank you. We have a good staff and they've done a lot of good work. We appreciate your support.
Yeah, yeah.
And this really is, it's an effort. It's a reflection of the work that the budget office does and the leadership that they have, but also all the department directors, all the departments coming in, because they really develop the budgets and they make the presentation here of, of what's in their budget, and they're making the decisions. As part of our policies is that we have decentralized budget processes, or that the people that are actually out there in the field that are making the decisions are involved in the process. And so I really appreciate Doug's leadership and the leadership of all the department directors and staff that are involved.
All right. With that, we do have a resolution for potential adoption that would adopt our fiscal year 2020 budget. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you again to everybody on the team. Okay, that brings us to nine K1 and 2. I'll mention that nine K2 is a resolution approving the 2019 through 20 consolidated plan, fifth action year plan. This is really how we spend our HUD grants. I think maybe what the best thing to do here would be to do the presentation, and I'll call back the public hearing if anybody wants to speak. So maybe we'll start there so people know what we're talking about.
Yeah, so Chris Varga is here from the Planning Department, just to give us an overview. It's a significant investment from the city, and we just hate to pass over that. And so I wanted Chris to have an opportunity to talk a little bit about the plan.
Thank you. Good morning. Chris Varga, Housing and Community Development Division in the Planning Department. The item before you is related to the 2019 consolidated plan, fifth year action plan. And the consolidated plan itself is a five-year planning document that's updated to identify community needs as related to the entitlement grants, the four grants that we receive from HUD as an entitlement city. Those grants are Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnership Program Grant, the Emergency Solutions Grant, and the Housing for Persons with AIDS. So the, each year of the consolidated plan, there is an action plan that more specifically outlines our goals and budgets for the upcoming year. And this year, our city received $4,869,051 in CDBG funds, slight decrease from last year, decrease of about $32,000. For home, we had a more significant decrease of $268,000. Home's all about the Affordable Housing Program. Our allocation this year was $2,214,939. For the Emergency Solutions Grant, which deals with our extremely poor and those at risk of homelessness, we had an increase of $21,000 to $415,903,000. And for Hopewa, our persons with AIDS, an increase of about $91,000 to $793,749. Attachment A provides our breakdown detail on a budget, which items we plan to carry over and which ones we plan to recapture. Collectively, about 2.4 million of CDBG funds are directed to housing programs for the low mod individual persons, income persons. This includes our in-house housing rehab programs that the department implements, our funds to Oklahoma City Housing Authority for unit modernization, funds to Community Action Agency to run our emergency home repair program on behalf of the city, and funds to our, this year, to two of our community housing development organizations who have a joint venture to do a housing development on Northeast 26th and Walnut. Other CDBG funds will, will support the Strong Neighborhood Initiative activities. We typically give money to Embar for the share fare program that gives discounted bus and taxi fares to those who are homeless, disabled, and seniors. Community Action Agency programs were continued to propose funding for the graffiti removal program, and there are small business training services. We also propose funding for Community Health Services, who provides health care for persons who are homeless. And we propose funding for, again, for the public facilities program category, not for specific projects per se yet, but public facilities in this context can be not only things such as utilities and street sidewalks, lightings, but can also relate to nonprofit facilities that are available to the public, such as homeless shelters, daycare for the disabled persons, other types of facilities like that. OKIRA continues to receive a proposed funding for urban renewal completion and the slum and blight activities in the northeast. Our Metro Fair Housing Council is included as the city's contracted fair housing arm to deal with fair housing law. We are required by HUD to have a component of fair housing testing and a body that receives those complaints and investigation, and they complete that activity for us. And finally, the planning and administrative budget is estimated at the 20% allowed by HUD. For the home program, requires that at least 15% of the program funds be set aside for CHODOs, our community housing development organizations. City currently has three certified CHODOs, Jefferson Park, Neighborhood Housing Services, and Positively Paseo. And those funds are to be used to build or rehab affordable housing. In addition, we're proposing from home, $400,000 for the down payment assistance programs, and just over a million dollars to our own internal whole house rehab programs. Planning and administration for home is limited to 10% of funds. So both home and CDBG has a significant portion this year of unprogrammed funds that serve both as a contingency for existing programs. And occasionally, the department issues a solicitation, an open solicitation for projects that are eligible under each of those funding. Finally, our ESG and Hopewa proposal funding are solicited each year, so there's no specific proposal yet. They are, proposals are received, reviewed, and ranked by the Continuum of Care Board, and their recommendations are forwarded to the council for funding. With that, I'd be happy to respond. Any questions?
Any questions for Chris? Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
I'll now return to item nine K1. That's the public hearing regarding this resolution that Chris just briefed on. Having now heard about it, I wanted to make sure, is there anyone who wishes to speak under that public hearing? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution found at nine K2 approving the 2019, 2020 consolidated plan, fifth action year plan. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, now, in somewhat unique fashion, I'm going to pull back up an item previously approved at the request of Councilman McAtee. And Councilman Stonecifer, I think, may want to step out. So this is item nine C2. This was a special permit to operate a mining and processing minerals and raw materials use. Councilman McAtee, I understand that someone, protester, one of your constituents came to speak and you wished to hear them out, but they missed the consideration of the issue.
What has occurred, and Kenny, if you'd come in here and ask judgment, make sure we're doing all this...
Oh, I'll talk to him. It's okay. She can, if you're just, we'll speak, she can speak, and then we'll go from there and see what happens.
Okay. What happened is one of the constituents just showed up, and she's protesting this particular zoning special permit. And so in all fairness to her, I'm going to give her the chance to make her case and talk, and then we'll go from there, so.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind.
My son was...
Might be ideal, could you step to the center microphone?
Sure.
And then, just, yeah.
My son is supposed to be here, he got tied up, so.
Okay.
I'm going to, maybe he could, before we vote on it, you could hear him when he gets here. But my name is Kathy Bogart. I live at 15501 South MacArthur. This permit that's been requested is at 15201 South MacArthur. You're going to say, well, do you have a, you're going to look at me and say, well, you know, you've got a stand permit down there. Yes, we do. We've had one since the 80s. We also have one from the Corps of Engineer. We have one from the Department of Mines. My problem is, we're in a flood zone, a flood plain down there. And we've had two companies come in. This company, and I have pictures, has built a brand-new road. And I believe on the website of Oklahoma City, I pulled this down, and it said flood zone insurance map. It said that any development in the flood plain without a permit is illegal. Such activities should be reported to the drainage commission. I have called everybody in the city about this. I've left dirty messages. I just want this to be heard because I'm tired of our road being, you know, the mining's okay, but the road he put up there, it's diverted all of the water out of the original flow right down the middle of MacArthur. That's one issue. This is what I looked at. This is my pictures that I took. This here is the road that has been built. My son, this was a closed city road. We have 80 acres back here in the back. We opened that road up so we could get back to it, have, place, so we can drive back to it. It was not like this. It was a dirt road. It, when it rained, of course, the water all ran across it, drained on out the flood plain like it's supposed to. But now, since it's got this big, big road here, there's a lake right up here, a pond. All of this water is draining right down the middle of MacArthur. This is continuous flow. This was just took last week after the rains had even quit. This is what it looked like, flowing water. This connects to this right here. You can see it coming out. There's an electrical thing there, comes right down the road. Then it goes right down the middle, and it hits this. Well, this is another issue over here, and I have that on the agenda also. And this is what it looked like, these roads right here. This is what my road looked like last week, from this drainage from these roads. I've lived down there since the 80s. I've had drive-through water, but it went away. It drained off, it went to the river, and that was it. Where I live, I've never been flooded, my house has never been flooded. My house is way down here at the end of this road. There's a disabled vet that lives right next to me, Mr. Flowers. I talked to him last night. He said, yes, Kathy? He said my car floated twice because I had to go to the doctor to get down the road. This was last week. I called the city to ask for help. Well, we can't put anything in there until the water dries up. Well, let me tell you, the water's not going to dry up in those holes. My, I drive an Escape, it's a company furnished vehicle. It's in a shot now because of the water damage to it. My company's not happy with me, so I'm driving another one. So Thursday, I get told, well, General Materials says, hey, we've got this, city called and told us to fill up these holes of, out here. Well, if, if the city told you to do it, why isn't your truck doing it? It was a completely different truck and company out there. So, you know, I don't know what's going on. I know that I'm, I don't want this done. I've called FEMA. I talked to a gentleman in Denton, Texas. It's the one that takes care of this area. He said he's been asking for information from a lady, from Michelle's her name, and said, there's not supposed to be anything in this area unless FEMA approves it. Now, with that said, with this permit here, this is the permit that you're talking about right there. This is a diagram that we were sent. This road is the one that's built. There's a lake right here, and it drains all the way down through here instead of coming down through here. That's my issue. I don't think this permit should be issued till the FEMA gets their saying in it and what needs to be done for drainage, because it's not going to improve till we get it done. So, you know, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Like I said, I've been fighting the city for, ever since it started raining. I'm sick of this road. The other company, when they came in, I don't care for them getting their stuff. You know, like I said, we have a permit, too. I just want this road took care of. There's a lot, the city gets lots of money from those three operations down there. And I just believe that the city either needs to get, work with FEMA to get this drainage took care of, or something, because this is not right. And I've been there, like I said, since the 80s. And yes, I've drove through water, but the next morning, it's all gone because it's all drained out. Not like these. I, I didn't get mail for over a week because the mailman couldn't get through there. So, you know, that, that's uncalled for. This is, this is man-made problems here. And this, this has contributed to it, and the other issue that I'll talk about after the meeting, it's contributed to it, too. So, you know, that's, that's my, what I want to say. So I just don't think this should be approved. And, you know, even with the city, this is what's in the city online. It says, development without a flood plan require, in a flood plain, requires a permit. And that's from FEMA. And FEMA told me that yesterday. They have not been contacted by the city or anyone else to come out there to see about issuing of a, a permit in this operation. So I do have the flood plain map. If you'd like to look at it, I can print it off for you. Like I said, I've done a lot of research on this, and I'm just tired of fighting the water. And I feel sorry for my neighbors, so.
Okay. Thank you.
What I'd like to do on this, and I've checked with the municipal council, he says, I'd like to vote to rescind the previous action and approve it, and then I'd like to vote for a two-week continuance so that the parties involved can get together, and we can get any engineers that have to get together, so we can get down to what we're really dealing with here.
Okay.
And am I on solid grounds there?
Yes.
So I would move to rescind the previous action on item nine C2.
Okay. Got a motion and a second to rescind our previous vote on item nine C2, which was a special permit to operating a mining and processing minerals and raw materials use at 15201 South MacArthur. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. The item has now been rescinded. Is there any previous...
And now, I'd like to ask for a two-week continuance on the item in question, item nine C2.
Okay.
Research this and find out what, and bring it back for action by the council.
Okay, we've got a deferral, a motion and a second on a deferral for item nine C2 for two weeks. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Winker, Eric's still here. Would you meet with her and, if you're able to, start the process? Thank you. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. All right, that brings us back to 9L1 and 2. 9L2 is a resolution to be introduced and set for final hearing on June 18th regarding appropriations for the fire department, et cetera. Maybe we'll hear the presentation, and then I'll call back the public hearing.
Yeah, and if it's okay. So basically, these are resolutions involving the public safety sales tax, which is 3.8 cents for the police department, 3.8 cents for fire department. I'll let Doug just give a quick overview. Item L1 and 2 is fire. Item M is a similar item that's, M1 and 2 is for police. So I'll just let him just talk generally about both of those, and then we can do the items.
So the resolutions that are before you today are part of our annual process to ensure that the funds in the police and fire sales tax are spent in a way that is consistent with the purposes approved by voters in 1989 when they approved the public safety sales tax. There are a number of specific items that were listed on the ballot, such as adding an additional 200 police and 200 firefighters, but there were also provisions made for projects that provide new, additional, or increased fire police service facilities or equipment. Now, there were some disagreements in the early years as to what constituted appropriate uses for the fire and police sales tax, and these resolutions are a part of the process outlined in the general entry of judgment used to settle a lawsuit about how sales tax funds could be spent. So these resolutions outline the projects that are proposed for the coming fiscal year and categorize them as those that are listed, projects that were specifically called out on the ballot, and those which are, provide new, additional, or increased service are categorized as other ser, other projects. A specific dollar amount is included with each project, and at the end of each fiscal year, we prepare a review of expenditures in the fire and police sales tax funds to ensure that funds were spent on the projects that were authorized and that they are within the authorized dollar amount. The Office of the City Auditor reviews that report for accuracy, and the final report is submitted to the council, usually in December after the external audit of the city's finances is completed. So fire is the first resolution that's before you. You'll see two listed projects there, funding for 202 uniform positions and $6.5 million for firefighting tools and equipment. Exhibit C, or the third project, is, is an other project. This is the fire compensation project. This is often referred to as the wage adjustment. One of the purposes of the 3/4 cent sales tax, which provides for a pay increase for police and fire uniform staff. The wage adjustment provides for a transfer from the fire sales tax to the general fund to pay for pay increases for the roughly 80% of firefighters who are in the general fund. There's a specific formula that's used to calculate the amount and the transfer, and that formula is checked by the city auditor as part of our process each year to ensure we're applying it correctly. So Exhibit D, it contains a listing of civilian positions that are supported by the fire sales tax. Here you'll see there are seven positions. This is an increase of one over the current year. Chief Kelly mentioned during his budget presentation, a system support specialist 2 is being added to support the IT function in fire. And the remaining projects have the same purposes as last year, advanced life support, wellness, fire technology, fire recruit overages, fire facility repairs, and fire station construction or remodel. The police resolution's very similar. It has two listed project, the first projects, the first funds 219 uniform officers, and the second, 2.4 million for maintenance and operations of police vehicles and equipment. The first other project is the police compensation project that, like fire, funds raises for those officers in the general fund. The next project, police legal services, is a longstanding project in the sales tax. Exhibit E is for civilian or non-commissioned support personnel. This includes five new positions for police. Chief City discussed these additions during his budget presentation. They include two dispatchers for the criminal information unit, two system support specialists for the new records management system, and a firearms examiner. The remaining other projects are for the same purposes as in the past, the DNA lab, capital and non-capital improvements, recruit overages, the civilian investigation specialist program, supplies and equipment, and a crime analyst. So these resolutions are being introduced today. We'll have a final hearing on June 18th. That way, we'll have them in place before we begin the new fiscal year. All of the amounts listed in the resolution match those amounts in the FY '20 budget that was just previously adopted for the fire and police sales tax. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on the resolutions.
Any questions for Doug on either item 9L2 or 9M2? Okay, thank you. Well, I'll return then to the public hearing on 9L1. So this is a public hearing regarding 9L2, this resolution regarding appropriations for the fire department. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt a resolution found at 9L2.
Move the resolution to be entered and set for final hearing on June 18th, 2019.
Perfect. Second, we've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to 9M1. This is a public hearing regarding the resolution to be introduced and set for final hearing on June 18th regarding appropriations for the police department for fiscal year 2019, 2020, et cetera. This was just presented on by Doug Dowler. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to introduce the resolution at 9M2.
Move the resolution to be introduced and set for final hearing on June 18th.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. This brings us to 9N. This is a resolution adopting the City of Oklahoma City Emergency Operations Plan, et cetera. And I believe we have a presentation.
Yeah, so we've asked Frank Barnes, he's our, it's Captain Frank Barnes, but he's our emergency manager for the city, and asked him to give a quick presentation on the emergency operations plan. The, I just wanted to mention just the great work that Frank and his team do, and I really appreciate all the work that they've done through the month of May where they've been challenged night after night with severe storms and coming in and putting in the extra time to, to be able to give the, the right responses and be able to coordinate our emergency responses. And he does a great job in leading with development of our emergency operations plan and with coordinating departments and coordinating training for emergency response. And I just appreciate the work that he does through the police department, working with fire department, but also working with all of our departments, because when we have an emergency response, there's just, there are multiple departments that get involved with that, whether it's in the initial response or in the cleanup afterwards, and Frank stays involved with that and has provided really strong leadership force, and I really do appreciate that.
Okay, then.
Need help?
There we go. All right, good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about this year's adoption of the emergency operations plan. The emergency operations plan is a framework. It's not a procedural document or a step-by-step guide. It provides a framework for how we are going to respond to and recover from major emergencies and disasters. There's an emphasis on coordination, because when there's a major emergency or disaster, we have what's called a polycentric response, where multiple agencies and organizations, both government and non-government, respond to the event, and it requires coordination of their efforts. It's an all-hazards plan, which means that we respond to the result, not to the cause. It applies citywide, it applies to all city departments, as well as to the entire city. It's active at all times. It does not require someone to activate it or say, go. And it's scalable and flexible, which means we can use it from everything, from small events to big events. We can scale up and scale down. Every year, we do a review of the document, and we incorporate changes. And the final step in that annual review is to bring the document to the city council for them to adopt it. This year, the changes are minor. We have, in the basic plan, we made one minor change in the finance section to cite the correct section for emergency purchases. In Appendix A, revised the number of airlines serving Will Rogers World Airport. And in Appendix F, on the multi-agency coordination center, we changed the MAC manager to the MAC director so that it is consistent with the National Incident Management System, Third Edition. And then lastly, in various places in the document, emergency manager was changed to emergency management director so that it complies with state statute, city municipal code, and our current standard operating procedures. That's it.
All right, thank you, Frank. Any questions for Frank on this? I'll say, Frank, I can't tell you, I know we don't talk a lot, and that's because your emails are so incredibly good that when I get them, I know everything I need to know. And you keep us constantly informed, and, and I feel like I'm in constant communication with you, especially these last few weeks, and I just can't tell you how much we appreciate what you do. And it, it just keeps everything running smoothly in a city that obviously has more than its share of, of emergencies.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anything else for Frank? Okay, well, I'd consider a motion to adopt the resolution then. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item 9O was stricken at the beginning of the meeting, which leaves us with 10A1. This is a claim recommended for approval. I don't believe we need executive session. 10A1A, Susan Russell. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? Seeing none, I entertain a motion. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. This brings us to items from council. Perhaps we'll handle the business and then go around the horseshoe. And I thought, I didn't warn you, Councilman Stonecypher, but I thought it might be best as chair of the Judiciary Committee for you to quarterback this a little bit.
Thank you, Your Honor. Last week, the Judiciary Committee met. I wanted to thank Joe Beth and Nikki for attending their first meeting. That was quite helpful, their attendance and their input. One of the things that we have the privilege of doing is periodically reviewing the survey that comes forth and speaks about our judges and their performance. We're going to have a report on June 18th as to that survey, but I would like to say, and I'd like those four judges to know, that they are doing an outstanding job. Their peers, their people that appear in front of them, law enforcement, all gave them the highest marks, and, and we should be very proud of that. Today's business is that the judges run in staggered terms, and so we have to appoint, reappoint in this case, two judges, and then we need to pick the presiding judge for two years and the vice-presiding judge for one year. And so the first item of business is I would move that there be a resolution reappointing Judge Philippa James as municipal judge. The first motion.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
The second resolution, Your Honor, is to pick the presiding judge, and in this case, I would ask that Philippa James be appointed for a two-year period, beginning July 1, 2019, and ending July 1, 2021.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Our third item of business, Your Honor, is the resolution designating a vice-presiding judge, and in this case, it is for a one-year term, as I mentioned, and that person would be Fred Austin, beginning July 1, 2019, and ending July 1, 2020.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
The last matter of business would be a resolution appointing, reappointing Judge Hasbrook for a two-year term, beginning July 1, 2019.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
That's it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Is it?
No, is there one more? Oh!
They probably, they probably want to be paid.
I forgot to turn the page. The last item of business, and, and most important to the, to the judges themselves, is their compensation and benefits. The Judiciary Committee reviewed that, those compensations and benefits and recommended a raise, which is attached in your, in your materials, and I would move the resolution establishing the compensation and benefits.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, that concludes the business under items from council. Now we'll go down here. Council McGrady?
Thanks, Mayor. Couple moments I'd like to bring to the council's attention. First was, I had the honor of sitting over coffee with City Councilman Mitch O'Farrell from Los Angeles. He represents the Hollywood Echo Park era, but he is a native Oklahoman, he's from Moore. And he reached out to the mayor's office, I believe they spoke. I had the honor of sitting with him. It really meant a lot to me as someone who is the first openly LGBT councilperson in Oklahoma City, to meet with someone who's also LGBT, who represents Los Angeles, and anyone who's read Grapes of Wrath knows that Oklahoma and California, we have a very storied history. So that'd be one thing. I'd also like to thank Congressman Beto O'Rourke for coming to town this weekend to meet with County Commissioner Kerry Blument and Senator, State Senator Kerry Hicks and myself, to discuss flood and storm damage that's happening across our state. He went up to Sand Springs after visiting Ward 2. I got to show him some video from some flooding that has been pretty systemic over the years in Central Park. I found him very engaged and thoughtful and informed, and was very happy to have that opportunity to sit with him. And then I would also like to thank the animal welfare folk and the people at the shelter for taking me on a tour of the facilities yesterday. Everyone adopt every kitten and cat that you can, find them homes, but also got to play with those adorable kittens. I would also point everyone's attention to the fact that what I learned was that, for all the good that our city is doing with the animal shelter right now, and the good work that those workers are doing out there, I would encourage anyone watching this, or anyone who cares about our, our animal neighbors, medium and large-sized dogs are really the ones having the most difficult time finding homes. And we need to be doing everything we can to encourage our family and our neighbors to spay and neuter, but also to encourage these, these creatures who make really great protectors and companions. I am not a dog person, so this is not me being like selfish, you know, I'm on YouTube looking at dog videos or something. It's just I see the need. I see the need. And, you know, I really see the opportunity here for us to encourage people to adopt those medium-to-large-sized dogs so that they find a home as well. Would encourage everyone to attend the Asian Night Market event. I will be out of town, unfortunately, but Toon and his folk have done a wonderful job over there in our Asian district with that event here in just a couple weeks. And I will speak more on this in a couple weeks, but I would like to say to everyone across the world right now, Happy Pride Month.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to see if we could investigate the possibility of addressing problems that occur about this time of year with respect to cottonwood trees. Not all cottonwood trees produce the cotton that fills the air and then eventually gets on the ground, or more problematic, gets in filter systems, septic tanks, creates, you know, even more problems for individuals with allergies. And focusing on parks and other public areas that we have control over, and perhaps we could begin to eliminate those trees that produce the cotton, say, over a five-to-seven year period, and as we take down a tree, replace it with another type of tree. There is also a procedure that can be performed where the trees are sprayed prior, I think, immediately prior to them budding or whatever the proper term is when, when the cotton begins to develop, which would eliminate that. And I think it has an impact for at least that year, but possibly a few other years too. But if we looked at a strategy to where we could eliminate the cotton-producing trees over a five-to-seven-year period, and again, replace those trees once we've accomplished that, as we accomplish that, I think a lot of citizens would be very grateful. And I would recommend that we concentrate first on the parks and other public areas that have a lot of housing and development around those, and then begin to stretch out to areas that are not as densely populated. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So I have a few things. First, I'd like to thank Councilman Cooper for coming and visiting Commonwealth Urban Farms last Saturday. Commonwealth is a farm that I volunteered at pretty much since I moved here. I think two weeks I moved here, and two weeks later, I was up there on a Saturday and have never left. And it's sort of in the heart, part of, the heart of Ward 2, so I wanted to invite Councilman Cooper to come tour and learn about what we have going on there with activating empty lots to, with, with green space, growing food for our neighbors. And, and really, the story of Commonwealth has really been one of getting outside of our bubbles, our houses, our backyards, and getting into the, into the public space and connecting with our neighbors over growing food and, and native plants and things that are beneficial to our pollinators and all of that good stuff. So thank you for coming. I will forgive you for my chin. I was riding my bike as I was leaving and wa- I was riding my bike as I was leaving and waved at Councilman Cooper, and that is why I have a busted-up chin right now. So, just me being clumsy.
It was harrowing to see a councilwoman just like, I'm like, "Oh, hi, there you go." And she just went down. I was like, "Oh, no!"
That's all me. So, and then, I'd also like to just talk about an event I got to attend last week on Thursday. The organization that I work for, Mental Health Association Oklahoma, shortly after I started working there, was gifted a program from the Red Cross. When the Murrah bombing happened, you know, I think we all know donations were pouring into our community from across the country, and the Red Cross was kind of tasked with expending those funds responsibly and appropriately. And so, they set up a fund. I think it started out somewhere in the area of $14 million. They hired one social worker to work cases related to the bombing, and they expected that it would last about a year or two, and they'd spend all the money and be done. And as of this month, they only have $20,000 left. So, it took 24 years to spend that money. One of the social workers, Sue Bullard, is the person who was hired 24 years ago, so she is about to retire after spending 24 years serving first responders, survivors, and then family members of those who died in the bombing. In the last, the reason the Red Cross decided to pass that program along to the Mental Health Association was that in the last five to six years, most of the cases that were getting opened were mental health cases. There were a lot of first responders at the time who were retiring, and now we're recognizing this need, that they experienced a lot of trauma at that time. And so, the executive director at the time, I believe it was Janine Bella, decided that it would be probably a better fit for the association to take that on. So, I do want to thank Debbie Hampton, who was the executive director of the Red Cross at the time of the bombing, as well as Janine, for really trusting the association with that program. Also, I'd like to thank Chief Kelly and Chaplain Teddy Wilson with the Fire Department for really helping, again, the staff steward that money really well. You know, just some of the numbers of what that money was able to do. They sent, or they, well, they served close to 4,000 people, and they spent over $2 million on sending first responders to trauma workshops. And that was between, and that's been in the last 24 years. So, it just seemed like the ending of an era of serving some people that had really significant needs related to that. And I didn't want it to go unmarked, and particularly just the impact that it's had on our city and on particularly our first responders that work for this city. So, I just want to thank all of the city staff, as well as those private folks who've been involved in stewarding that money to the people who really need it.
Thank you. I have a few things here, so let's just say, first, Friday, this past Friday, Mayor and I participated in the first pitch for the women's softball game. And UCLA and Arizona, they played. And I was told, I just want you to know this, I was told, the catcher for Arizona said my pitch was much better than yours.
Well, UCLA's still playing. And that's who caught my pitch, so just saying.
Well, OU is going to take them out tonight, so go, ladies! But it was a lot of fun to participate, and that was my first time being able to participate in the women's softball. So, that was amazing to see, because just being and growing up in the community, and you are familiar with a lot of things, but you don't get to participate in a lot of things. So, it was just an honor to be a part of that. So, again, go OU. They do play, ladies play tonight, and we need this win. Also, the 113th Oklahoma State Baptist Convention of Christian Education is convening in Oklahoma City, and I just wanted to bring that up, because think about that and consider, it's 113 years consistently that they've been having this meeting for the Oklahoma State. And this week, they are convening in Oklahoma City, so we wish them a wonderful visit while they are here. Urban League, they're having a gala on June 15. And I wanted to mention, there was a gentleman that passed away, and I considered him a mentor, one of my mentors in radio, Mr. Fred Elkins, and he worked for Perry Publishing and Broadcasting for a number of years. And he was very instrumental when I first got there in helping me, and to hear of his passing was very, very hurtful. And he was definitely a leader in his field and in the things that he was doing. We have been continuing our food insecurity conversation, so we're going to have a task force that we will have participating next week. And as I was talking about the historic preservation that we were talking about when we talked about during our agenda, I wanted to actually thank the Historic Preservation Committee for that nomination. And that's where I was, I missed that opportunity to do that, so I wanted to do that now. There's summer feeding programs that are happening right now in Ward 7 or in the Northeast quadrant. I would like to mention OU Children's Hospital is one of those feeding sites, as well as the Ralph Ellison Library. And Faith Memorial Baptist Church, that I do know, will be feeding on the weekend. So, that's something for those who may need that information. And we had, I have a few more things, but it'll be just a second, I'm sorry. We have midnight basketball camp at Christ Temple, and that starts this Friday for all our young people. They're going to have food, tutoring, mentoring from 7 until midnight, so if you have any young people, please bring them out, so they can participate in that event. And I want to give a special congratulations. There is a young man from Star Spencer High School, Dwayne Moore. He had perfect attendance, so he won a free car. And that was from Hudeberg Auto Group and the Oklahoma Public Schools Foundation. And he was a member, a young man from Star Spencer, so congratulations to him. Sheldon Williams Foundation, he's having today's readers make tomorrow's leaders, and that's for our young people this Saturday. So, there's a lot of stuff happening this Saturday. That's from 10 to 2 at St. Luke Church in the Spencer areas, which is still Oklahoma City. One OKC is this Saturday, from 12 to 4. We have the Northeast Farmers Market, which officially opens this Saturday. The National Gun Violence Awareness Day is this Saturday as well, at the Marriott Gardens from 10 to 11. And we had at our last council meeting, we talked about this with our SNI program, the steam camps that they're having at the Urban League, and also, there's another location, and I believe it's at Douglas Center, I may be mistaken, but I did hear yesterday that over 130 kids showed up at the Urban League, and a lot of them were first-time, young people that had never been through this program before. So, we're very excited about that program. Summer reading is happening at Ralph Ellison. I do want to thank the Oklahoma City Police Department. We had an incident that happened a couple weeks ago, and I reached out to Deputy Chief Gorley, and he immediately went into action. So, I do want to thank the quick response for the commitment to our community. And also, lastly, I want to talk about the SNI program. And also, with that program, they had it at Capital View this past weekend, and they gave over, with the mobile market, over 160 bags of fresh fruits and vegetables. So, they gave them everything that they had away, but the unfortunate piece to that is people were still coming. So, that obviously addresses that there is a dire need to address the food insecurity in our communities. But, on the plus side, there were over 70 vaccinations that were given to our pets. And my pet, Mimi, received a free vaccination on Saturday. So, if you want to look at the SNI page, you can see her smiling, so happy that she received a free vaccination. And they're going to do it all over again on June 15 at JFK Park. And I'm hoping to see if we can get some yoga in there, too. So, I'll be letting people know about that, so you can come on out and join in on that conversation. And my last thing, and I'm done, is June 18th, we were talking about Juneteenth, as I mentioned earlier in the beginning. But the Oklahoma History Center, with the Oklahoma Historical Society, they're going to be having a conversation to talk more in depth about Juneteenth, if anyone wants to come out. And that's going to start at 7:00 PM. And Healthy Ministry Academy is this Saturday, too, at Metro Tech. And OSU Extension, I wanted to mention them, because they have sewing camps and kids in the kitchen. So, there's a lot of stuff that's happening in the community, so I just want to make sure that as a Ward 7, we are aware of the many opportunities for our young people. Thank you.
All right. That concludes items from council. Item 12 on the agenda, City Manager Reports.
Yes, so we have a presentation, just an update on streetlight installation. So, Eric Winger's here, and we have representatives from OG&E that will be here as well to speak about programs on their side.
Thank you, City Manager Eric Winger, Director of Public Works. And we do have several city staff and representatives from OG&E, including Pat Lewis and Melana Moffett, that are going to assist today. So, we're working quickly and towards completing the streetlight repairs that have been a problem for Oklahoma City for several months. And so, I bring to you another update of some of the progress that's been made since our update just in May. Let's go to the next slide. We're going to look at five different things. We've talked about highway street lighting, City Project 180 lighting, copper theft update. Then, we're also going to get some additional updates from OG&E on their citizen reporting and reporting outages, and then also the LED conversions. So, on highway street lighting, you may recall, just a couple of short months ago, we had literally two dozen different locations of highway street lighting, locations that were out of service, either due to copper theft, due to infrastructure damage, just other related issues. So, as we look at that map today, I'm going to hone in and tell you that there are just now five locations from that original list that was nearly two dozen long, where we are still seeing some outages that are currently being worked. The one that is the most significant is in the middle of the drawing. You'll see Interstate 40. And I'm going to summarize these on this next list, just to kind of give you some perspective. Interstate 40 from I-44 to I-35, this also includes a portion of the Boulevard lighting that is out. Those are repairs that are being completed by ODOT as a part of construction. We are reporting one new theft since our last update. This is at Reno and the Tinker Diagonal. It's a localized issue at that location, but there's continuing and ongoing work by OG&E at I-240 and I-35. And then, the final two that are on this list, again, related to construction by ODOT, I-44 between 235 to Lincoln, and I-44 southbound to westbound Bridge and northwest 39th Expressway. So, the list is quite less than what it was before. Three of the locations are summarized, ODOT construction, ODOT completion, and then there are two remaining that you'll see, the new theft and the I-240 and I-35 that are being completed by OG&E.
Eric, I think there were three on the list last time. Does that sound right?
Of total outages on highway?
Yeah, yeah.
I, so, give me just one moment. I think we had a list that had eight total, but that also included damaged infrastructure. So, we had four highway items, and then we had four that were infrastructure. We've combined those into a single list now. But there has been progress. But I do mention the new theft. That wasn't something that we had from last time. This is really just an update that we're going to continue to see, just because of ongoing ODOT construction. And there's three major underchanges that they're currently doing work, I-44 and 235, I-240 and I-35, and then also new work at I-35 and I-44, that we need to expect some periodic outages just due to construction. Mentioned that those would be coming up from time to time, just because as ODOT takes systems offline, as they do major infrastructure repair, those are just areas that they have to discontinue electrical service for construction activities. So, if we look at the repair timeline, and this is really focused towards the highway lighting, we are still on track for a September completion, except for the ODOT construction projects. They have those ongoing projects that are going to go through summer of 2020. OG&E's made a lot of progress on the highway lighting. Not, obviously, with any new reports that could come in after today, but I suspect that they'll be ahead of the schedule of the September completion, with just two locations for OG&E to complete. When we looked at the P-180 lights, and again, this was also a part of our discussion with widespread downtown lighting outages, we've also made significant progress in this area as well. And this is just, again, a picture to help show the difference in the two types of lights that are being replaced. These are the silver poles that are downtown. The light that is halfway up the pole is a pedestrian light. The light that is at the very top of the pole is a actual streetlight. From the update that we had given just last month, we had looked at 129 total streetlights. At that point last month, we had not received all of that hardware. And so, a lot of progress was made. All of the parts are now here to replace all of those lights. We only had 98 previously received. We now have all 169 units in warehouses in Oklahoma City that TLS, who is our contractor, is replacing. They've actually made quite a few replacements in several locations that I'll show you in just a moment. On the pedestrian lights, there's 120 to be replaced. Last month, we had completed 37 of 38 total hardware packages that are in, but we still have not received all of the upgrade parts for the pedestrian lights. You might recall that I mentioned that there's a manufacturing delay on this, and so there is a concern that we're not going to make that September timeframe for the pedestrian light. But if we finish all of the street lighting, we should not see dark areas in downtown Oklahoma City. We may just have some of those mid-height lights that are not fixed at that point. So, we're on track to have those completed. Next slide. TLS has worked a number of areas in downtown just in the last month. They've completed work on Main Street, Sheridan, in California. They're currently working on couch as we speak, and so you'll see trucks with buckets attached to them, where they're actually servicing these lights. They're pretty much out daily in Oklahoma City. So, we've added quite a bit of green to this map that we didn't have last month, and then, of course, we work over the next month, maybe month and a half to finish with TLS for the rest of the downtown projects. So, this is the schedule. And again, on the pedestrian lights, I do have some concern that we are not going to make the original schedule that we had anticipated, but on the streetlights, I feel very confident that the downtown streetlights will be replaced. And then, we still have one final Project 180 package that's wrapping up. That's predominantly some work that's on Broadway that's being completed as well. But we're pretty much from the previous updates on track for the completions that were promised. I have a brief update on copper theft for you today. One of the items, one of the completions in May is that six investigations were completed by Oklahoma City Police Department. Six recyclers declined to make those purchases as a part of their activities, where they're testing to make sure that we're not having some illegal purchases or sale of copper wiring. We've now moved to where we're working with the Recyclers Association to form a committee to help maybe look at some state law updates. The law has been updated on a number of occasions, but the difficulty has been there's some interpretation issues on the way that it's written. So, this committee is going to focus on trying to simplify and make it as easily understood as possible to assist in the enforcement. So, dramatic improvements on the copper theft, only the one to report as a new, where we were having just multiples in large locations, having to address those. So, I think significant improvement, and many thanks to our Oklahoma City Police Department for being effective in that area. So, at this point, I would like to introduce or reintroduce Melana Moffett with OG&E. She's been here before, so she should be a familiar face, but she's going to update on a couple of the OG&E items.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, today, I just wanted to circle back around. I believe it was last month, we talked about that new online reporting capability that we added for streetlights. So, just circling back around to that, it's still available. It's out there on OG&E.com. If you click on the streetlights in the lower right-hand corner, you can enter in the information, complete the form. Once that's submitted, it will send you back a ticket number for that outage. What I did wanted to touch base on this was, since we have, since this has gone live out on our website, we have had 415 streetlight outage forms submitted. So, we're seeing great usage of it, so we still encourage everyone to please continue to use it, please continue to use this form. So, it's been less than two months, and 415 outages, it's great progress. All right. So, we also recently had the LED agreement. We worked that out and have that signed. We have begun converting lights to LED, so I kind of wanted to circle back around on that as well. There's going to be a lot of questions now, like, what do these lights look like? What can we expect out of them? Are they bright? Are they dim? So, I wanted to first show you what a before-and-after picture looks like. Just found this interesting. So, this is over on Southwestern. This is actually a light over a traffic signal. It's a 250-watt Cobra. This light has been failing. We, since we had that agreement, we went ahead and converted it. So, if you can go to the next one for me. So, this is what the LED version of that light looks like. This is the 250-watt equivalent in LED. When I say equivalent, it's because it gives the same amount of light, the same lumens, but uses less wattage. So, these are just some of my most frequently asked questions in general conversation with individuals. They say, "Hey, you know, is the light brighter?" No, the light's not brighter. It's technically the same light output, it just looks a little different. It looks a little different because it goes directly towards the ground. You know, if you look at those legacy lights, like those high-pressured sodium, which is what is mainly out there today, it has kind of that yellow glow around it, that light pollution. The LED lights, they don't have that. Their light goes directly towards their target. So, if it's a light that's pointed towards the ground for a walking path, it's going to go straight to the ground. It's going to light that area up. So, is the light the same color? That's another common one. You know, there's been a lot of talk out in the industry. If you go to buy light bulbs for your home, you often see... for your home, you often see, you know, do you want the daylight or the soft white? All of ours are 3000K. That's what we found to be the best from the industry standard out there. So, they, they are a little bit different color. You know, the old legacy lights have kind of that yellow glow to them. The, the LED lights are more like daylight. They're a natural, more natural light. They're not, they're not the super-bright ones that are like the 5000K. They're, they're the middle of the road, but they're still a nice, clean daylight look. Will the LED last longer? So, we're early in this conversion. You know, we don't have the data from the lights that we've put in to say with, with confidence, absolutely. However, from our industry research, it shows that we can expect them to last three to four times longer. So, we can expect to have, you know, less outages with that. Is it dimmable? This is another question that I get on a semi-regular basis. At this time, we do not have those capabilities. I know that there are some different projects that the city does have those, but at this time, we don't offer that. All of our lights are set on the same calendar and at the same level of brightness all the way around, whether it's a decorative light, or if it's a streetlight, or if it's a security light. It's set at a certain amount of lumens. Any questions? No?
Thank you for all you're doing. Looks great.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
So, I think as we wrap up this update, there's, again, been considerable progress. You're going to continue to see a lot of vehicles, OG&E and their contractors, city crews, and our contractors also working on downtown lights over the next, say, month to two into the summer as we complete the last of the repairs. The LED conversion, you may recall, is anticipated to take for the city a period of up to five years, and so, that's something that's going to be very steady, but with the number of lights in, in Oklahoma City, it's just going to take some time. So, we're committed, and we continue to work very closely with OG&E and have regular meetings to update on the status, just to make sure that there's full coordination between the agencies. And with that, I will wrap up and, and ask if there's any final questions for today.
Any. Thank you, Eric. Any questions?
Sorry, random question. The manufacturing, why, what's going on there? Like, why are they behind in?
So, the Project 180 lights are a light that was purchased from a company named Begga. It's a decorative light, and so, the hardware that we're having to receive has to come from them. It can't come from another manufacturer. On the pedestrian light, there's a component on the LED circuit board, I don't know which component, but they cannot get that one piece to manufacture the total light package. And so, it's not just a bulb. When we go to LED, there's actually some other circuitry and things that actually help control that light, and there's a piece of that circuitry that they just cannot receive enough parts to, to complete their work. So, they're ready to finish the performance, but they're waiting on parts themselves. I guess it's a high-demand type item. I don't, I mean, and I can bring some other updates, but right now, we're, we're kind of stalled on receiving any additional ones for now.
Any other questions for Eric? All right. Well, keep up the progress. Appreciate it very much. Okay, we also have claims and payroll, which you can look at at our website at OKC.gov under this agenda. We do have a citizen who signed up to speak. It's, it's someone we heard from earlier, Kathy Bogart. And Kathy, did you, you wish to speak under citizens to be heard as well?
Yes.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind restating your name and address and keep these comments under three minutes.
Okay, I'll try. My name is Kathy Bogart. Again, I live at 15501 South MacArthur. I'm here again. This is a citizen's complaint. We have a company that's on the east side of us. It's called General Materials. Well, General Materials, they went in front of the commission a few months, well, last year. They asked to be rezoned in a corner there, and it was granted to them, but they were getting ready to put a frac sand operation out there. Well, they, I never have found the permit that they were issued to put that frac sand operation out there. So, with that said, I'd like to show you what it looks like with their frac sand operation. This here is on 149th Street. This is a accumulation of, of water here. This is on Butler's property, right across from General Materials. This water is supposed to drain. There's supposedly a tile. It drains into the road, goes down the road, and it's supposed to go through the corner. Well, that's all blocked off. This here is your frac sand operation with their burr there. It's probably 12-foot tall at least, maybe taller. This was the first day it rained. This is a, a hose pumping water out into the middle of the street of 149th because they had some water behind their thing there, and they didn't want to get all wet. Well, you take that, and this is coming down the road here. This is, this is part of their tire. This goes with this. This here is going down MacArthur. You can, this is like a seven-foot fence post right there. You can see how tall that is. There's no water going to go over that. It's all going down the road. Now, they went in, they put in a, a entryway and put a small tin horn in there, and to this day, they have never used that entry. All they've done is built it up real high and shoved the water over to the other side of the road. This is another entry that they had, or have, and this is stocked up. They usually put dirt in there, keep it stocked up so water doesn't drain in there, so it'll just run out all over the road. So, a little bit further down the road, they've put in these two little pipes here to carry the water across to this little ditch they have that goes under their road. But these pipes aren't big enough to carry anything. I mean, they're very small. And then, we have, this is picture looking from my house down toward there. If you see that big tower they built down there, till I started complaining, there was not one light on that thing. I'm in the air, in the airport flight pattern right there. I can see the planes go over very closely. They're very low. It's a wonder that they didn't hit one, you know? And you can find all kinds of stuff on the internet anymore. And I did find the flight pattern for Oklahoma City Airport, and it is in the flight pattern. Well, now, they have turned on some lights, but it's so tall, I don't see how they got by with that. My neighbor yesterday told me, he says, "Well, I thought a, a plane was going to hit it the other day. It was so low coming through there." Well, that's ridiculous. And then, this here, this is where the water has gone. That's our gate going into our operation. As of now, we cannot operate our, our sand operation because they have flooded us out, the road, everything about it. My son just texted me while I go, said, "Sorry, Mom, can't be there." There's four trucks stuck on South MacArthur right now, having to have wreckers here to get them out. That's how bad my road is right now. My concern is, and I've talked to FEMA about this yesterday also. I was on the phone with them for quite some time. They, this is not allowed. This burr here is not allowed in the floodplain, flood zone, floodway, whatever you want to call it. And they have it in like a L shape around their property. They're piling sand there. They, they've got big stockpiles of sand, which is not supposed to be there. I know according to FEMA, you cannot put stockpiles in there. We don't have stockpiles. It has to be permitted. So, with all that said, all of this has been done, and I don't think the city is aware, and I don't think that you are taking enough ownership to go out there and see what these companies are doing out there. I mean, I'm, I'm just a citizen out there, and, you know, I'm getting tired of having to fight this every time it rains, every time something happens. The people don't want to help us. Last week, they said, "Well, the city called. They told us to fill up the holes out here." Well, I don't think the city called and told them to bring in a trucking company that nobody even heard of to fill in holes of dirt out there. They have all these trucks, Lemons does. The Mr. Lemons was on Channel 4 the other day saying, "Yes, we were pumping water out of our holding area into the street." And then, he said, "Can I take that off?" He admitted to it, you know? So, they know they're doing wrong, but they don't want to help us in any way. So, I just want the city to help us to get this took care of. I want to be heard, that everyone knows when I call what's going on out on South MacArthur.
Okay. Well, thank you, and I know I saw Eric come in. Eric Winger, our Public Works Director, might be able to visit with you a little bit after the meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Well, that concludes. That was the only citizen that had signed up to speak, which means we have reached the end of our agenda, and we have no further business, and we are adjourned.